Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that the agenda be approved. I'll call for question. All who's in favor.
Aye.
All who's opposed. The agenda is approved. The consent agenda. Purchase order. Any questions for... Tracy's not here, believe it or not. But...
She is so.
She is.
Yeah, but she's on vacation.
That's how dedicated she is.
Any questions on the consent, on the purchase order? You got off easy, Tracy. God. Internal budget revisions, there are none. Changes in status. Hiring recommendations. I got my glasses. That's a good thing. New hire received from Tim Zaya, Community Corrections Director for Annalise Lee, as a DRC case manager, effective January thirteenth, annual salary of fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Change in status. Marty Roberts, Fire Chief for William Newcombe. Part-time firefighter, moved to full-time, effective January first, with a salary change from twenty-one dollars an hour to seventy-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars annually. Letter of resignation received from Katie Wilks DeLagati, Prosecuting Attorney, from Joseph Kinzer, effective December thirty-first. Of course, he'll be moving to prosecuting attorney. Approval of minutes, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Everyone was present, so if you have a correction, we'll take it at the present time. If you don't, we'll move on to the next one. Avoided check, uh, request, canceled check request for Redwood Toxicology because the check was kind of screwed up. I don't know how else to say it. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, that the consent agenda be approved. All who's in favor.
Aye.
All who's opposed. The consent agenda is approved. Uh, no assessment logs. Reconsolidation applications and property applications, nothing to present. Board and meeting reports. Mr. Whittaker.
I had no meetings to report on, but however, I hope everyone enjoyed a Merry Christmas and soon to be a Happy New Year.
Callie.
Um, no board meetings either, but I did, of course, we all, most of us attended the Dave Report Center dedication last Thursday after our meeting. What a, what a nice facility. And hopefully it'll be a great addition to support this need in this community for many years to come. And also last Thursday afternoon at three o'clock, met with Kevin Walker, Jack Owens, from the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Foundation. And Kevin had his son there, matter of fact. And we toured the old historic courthouse, and we were joined by Matt Umstead, H.D. Boyd, Eddie came by later in the day, and the museum board chairman, Mr. Roberts, as well, so. Were there for a couple hours, actually, and discussed a lot of really very interesting thoughts and ideas about the potential for this building and potential use in the future of that building, so.
Well, there's been quite a number of courthouses throughout Virginia that have been repurposed.
And several by the foundation themselves. And that's why they were obviously asked to be there. And we think there's a possibility we could do some work with, with them to maybe get that thing in use. You know, probably the worst thing that can happen to that facility is that they're empty.
Yeah.
Sooner we can get somebody there and get it in use, then the better, so.
I was stopped at the stoplight, and there were Queen and King, and I happened to look at the courthouse and notice that the West Virginia symbol at the top has really deteriorated.
Maybe that's the first thing they would do is restore that if whoever takes it over.
Fact, it's unrecognized.
But you know, you can go up into the, I guess you would call it an attic or whatever, but you can see where the, where the, yeah. You can see the burning of the wood there that was there years ago. Where was it still?
Yeah, that's what I heard. But I heard that from Elaine, who was probably there at the time, so.
My, my claim to fame was, when I was in college, one of my summer jobs of two years was painting for Mead Ring. And we painted the courthouse, the exterior of the courthouse. And I was, I had a rope around my waist and stood out on the ledge of the top of the courthouse, painting the facility there. I, I don't know that I'd do it today, but I was dumb enough to do it then, and for two thirty-five an hour, by the way.
That was before OSHA.
Absolutely, yeah. No cranes, no lifts. You stand right there with a rope around your waist. It was quite interesting, so. But really, truthfully though, they've taken over, Matt helped me out here, four or five different courthouses in the Shenandoah Valley, which is a large area, but still, one in Winchester, one down in Woodstock, and close ones. And I think it would be a, a good thing to plan a trip, potentially in the future, to go down and visit these facilities, to see what they've done with them, and.
When was that courthouse built? When was that courthouse built? Yeah. Oh, so it was before the Civil War.
Civil War. But then there was a major restoration in, Matt, nineteen, huh, eight?
Nineteen oh eight.
Oh eight, yeah. And, but there's a lot of history there. Because it's pre-Civil War, that brings them into play. And to me, I couldn't think of a better thing that could happen to it if we could get them involved with it. We'll continue that negotiation. Thank you.
Eddie.
Oh, yes, Mr. President. I also attended the Dave Report grand opening of their, of their new addition. And I want to take this opportunity to, to not only thank Wainsboro Construction really for a nice project and a, and a nice final product that they delivered, but also thanks to Tim, Gary, Tracy, and Jack. Every two weeks, we're meeting on that particular building and moving it along. So thanks for their efforts. Also, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to attend the swearing-in of the magistrates and, uh, thanks to their, our court marshals for the job that they do within that facility. I attended the swearing-in of our prosecutor on Friday and our sheriff on, I think it was Monday. So wish, wish all of them the very best.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have no meetings to report on. So we'll move on. Any board and commission, commissioned vacancies to address?
Don't have any at this time.
Turn the page. Story of my life, turn the page.
Bob Seeger. Nice turning the big one today, brother.
Hey. I can hardly wait.
Lynda, do you agree?
Yeah, but it don't pay much. Mr. Wine, senior services lease agreement.
Yeah, they were just looking for filler here so we didn't let you run the meeting in five minutes to close up, right? So kind of thought maybe take the opportunity just to review some of the things that have been going on. Some finishing up this year, some started this year, some finishing up next year. Just kind of walk you through them. If I can answer any questions or add to it. I think the first place we'll start is at 110 West King. If you remember, a few years ago, 126 West King was demolished. And in that effort, you ended up with a gravel parking lot in downtown Martinsburg, to which the mayor and city weren't the most happy. But this commission assured them, then the council assured them you'd have it paved and looking nice as time progressed. So we did do that. You now have a nice paved parking lot that's striped. The sidewalk was repaired out front. The, when you took 126 down, it had a connection to 110, which the drive-through was kind of shared. So in that effort, when it was tore off, the facade to the west side of 110 had issues. Mr. Whittaker shared a contact and got us in and had a vendor come in and help us. So all in, you have now the old drive-through is covered, parking lot's paved, it looks great. So all in, you had about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars invested in the paving. Had a pretty significant issues with subgrade where 126 was tore down. There was a little more wood left behind in the subgrade than should have been allowed. So that ran over a little bit of what you anticipated it. While we're talking about that, something to, for you to be thinking about is what you want to do with 110 and if there's any intent. As you all are aware, you've kind of earmarked that with the vision for potentially the museum. There's been discussions back and forth. You had declared a surplus. You talked about putting it on the market. We need to, you need to try to think about what you want to do with that this coming year. It's sitting there dormant. You, we have the humidifiers in the basement, that's it. So it's now been there the better part of five years with no heater or anything. Longer it does that, worse it is for its bones, so. The next project that we got involved in was the LED upgrades. That excludes the Dunn Building and the DRC because those LED projects were wrapped into their contracts. But you got, you awarded an LED contract that did eight oh two limit rouse, which is emergency management and nine one one, animal control, the judicial center, the sheriff's department. That was two point nine million dollars and it's finished. It's all controlled, so that project Dunn signed off on, you fully paid for it. So you've seen some significant lighting bills. They'll continue to go down as we dial the system in, but working great. That's where you got the colored lights on the judicial center, which are now holiday lights. So when we turn those things on, got kudos and compliments almost to be pretty good. The, the next, the bigger one that's involved is the Dave Report Center. You're officially done with phase one of that project, which was the building in four one and four three. We have some residual held back, and that will all come to fruition as time moves on. That, that contract was awarded with the mechanical to the tune with all change orders. Seven point eight nine million is where you are on it. Remember, you had about nine point nine and change in the bond money left over. So currently, if you're, a few weeks ago, you approved the final designs for floor two. Those build designs are in Wainsboro's hands for a potential change order. We'll be seeing those probably maybe as soon as next week or the week after. If that price comes in, in the leftover monies in the bonds. So you may very well be able to finish four two. It was a light design. It was about four offices, a couple conference rooms, and then a, an area, a congregation area, had some tables, a library. So as it stands now, you're at seven point eight nine four million. I say that lightly because furniture, there's some furniture and stuff that comes out of that that I didn't add in. That's just the construction number with mechanical. The law enforcement building I mentioned earlier that you did the LED upgrade, you also did a mechanical upgrade over there. When we designed, or when the commission designed that and did the in-house build in twenty thirteen, the units that were put up there, honestly, you had problems from day one. They were like commercial, if not heavy residential units that were placed up there. And part of the upgrade that you did at the judicial center, the county commission also approved an upgrade to the sheriff's department. That was finished. That was about six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And we've seen significant increase in efficiency and internal comfort since that one was done. The old jail project, you budgeted about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it. That project's setting at a million dollars right now. You had a few change orders that couldn't get passed. Think it's on target. The target actually was mid-December. It's now mid-January. The space for the judge on the second floor will be done end of this week. I, they need to schedule a meeting maybe tomorrow with the judge. Furniture now is in question. They're going to try and repurpose some of the business court furniture, but we also have some furniture at Baltimore Street that I think that is fine. You have, in the new budget, there's, got to have the chairs in the courtroom and the benches behind there. Most of the casework is in the contract, but some isn't. We've had some challenges there, Eddie, from wars on the jails, cells. The first ones that were, that were in the bid spec and came out, they were like sixteen weeks just for construction to start and like thirty-two weeks to deliver. Actually, Roberts Welding locally, Chad Roberts here in town, they came in and they're actually building them. The spec right on site, or in the shop, installed on site. So that was almost an eighty thousand dollar savings in that, but that quickly got ate up by some other thing. Trying to remodel a hundred-plus-year-old building to do, use for courts. No easy target, but it's moving. One of the biggest holdups now is the ballistic material for the windows. They, they had it ordered, but this is the glass, and I forget how thick it was. I think it's pushing inch and a half inch thick, inch and a half thick, excuse me. They, what they decided to do was the, the material that, if you don't know, the front of all benches is ballistic protected. So if something's happening, everybody hits the floor, it's, it's rated to a rifle round, not just a weapon. But they're going to use that material on the bottom sash of the windows all the way around the courtroom. Will be see-through, obviously, but they're going to make it look nice in the interim. That way, when the glass comes, they just take it out and put the glass. Everybody's on board. The, the judge and her staff, facilities and their team and Wainsboro and their team all working really well together, trying to pull that thing together. It's like I said, they started digging around in there. It was challenging, to say the least, but I think we'll make it. We didn't make the December fifteenth deadline, but we're going to be close. The mechanical upgrade at the judicial center, that was a six million dollar project. You took twelve archaic units off the rooftop of that building that had been there and installed in oh three. I think, back then, I think that technology that was used, I think there was probably a decision made to be as cost-effective as possible. So not only did it live there for twenty years, but it was probably a generation or two old by the time it got there. So you have since taken all of that off. You've got a new chiller plant in the parking lot and air handlers on the roof. Just to give you an idea, you would have had twelve units on the roof running today. Now, it's cold outside, but they would still been running. You haven't used a compressor or used ice water in the last two weeks. You've been using outside air, going through an energy recovery wheel and keeping that building to temp. With literally just, just, just a fan pulling air. That's how efficient it is. Watch those, those invoices and stuff for about a year. I think you're going to see significant cost in that building. Seventy, I think it's right at a hundred thousand square feet is what they rate that building at. So you have the new energy star ready for it. So it went up a point from last year, so you're going the right way.
Let me ask you a question while you're... The sheriff is always talking about... The sheriff is always talking about adding multiple new deputies. Is the sheriff's office capable of handling additional deputies?
It's, it, when this body built that building, it was created for one additional shift, as they called them. So, in their squad room, it had four, then I don't know how many there were. I think it was 12 officers in each corner of that room. So, historically, where there was enough room to, to expand to one more shift over there. They've since changed and working two shifts now. I think they're working two, 12, I don't know what they do, but it's different. There was some room for expansion, but not much. I can tell you that the north end public safety complex will have a, an area for law enforcement there. And then, clearly, the south end public safety complex is involved, but the north will be first. And if the sheriff grows and this commission facilitates the 1% sales tax, I mean, you, you've already discussed 15 officers.
Yeah, that, that worried me because, you know.
They won't fit there.
It makes sense to go north and south instead of here.
Oh, yeah.
There's, I mean, there's no room to go out on that parcel. The only way to go is to up and I can tell you, going up on the existing building when it's occupied is almost impossible.
I've had several comments delivered to me about the 1% sales tax. Public isn't really thrilled about it. I said, you know, if you want fire and police protection.
And also SROs in your schools.
Yeah.
Who's going to vote against that?
The, the health department project was budgeted 1.9 million. It's about 2 million right now. It's under roof, it's dry on the inside. Everything's moving along over there, nothing big. We haven't seen any big change orders. Lance Construction's been really good to deal with. Their project managers are very, very, very thorough. He and the PM from Breckland Hellman, Chris Short, those two together, if you could hire them away, those would be good hires. They've really got their game. But all's going well, probably April for completion of the health point project. Everything, I said, is moving along as planned. Dunn Building, that project is for purposes of the open contract. It was 11.6 million dollars. It's done. We still have a little residual. As a matter of fact, I think I just forwarded Tracy the final payment just today. The, we've got, our team is doing some internal work to facilitate in the move of communications and your, your legal team into our suite facilities is doing construction on that now. So, probably, I'd say in the next three months, all construction in this building will be completed.
Well, the silence is wonderful.
Isn't it nice? It's very nice.
Question. You said her, when you talked about the judge in the new jail. I thought Steve Redding was moving.
Yeah, initially it was, and it is now Judge McGoffin is going over there.
Okay.
That is one of those things that while you own the building and you spend the money, you have no control over how they use it, what they do. They've decided amongst themselves, meaning the court, has decided that Judge McGoffin best fits over there. That, that courtroom isn't a jury courtroom, so jury trials can't be held over there. So, whatever they do has to be tailored to the judge that doesn't get involved in juries. So, the, the vision moving forward is the judge that's in there, if they do end up with a jury trial, they'll have to go use a courtroom in the judicial center. And we had a casual conversation last week, week before last. You probably aren't done seeing judiciary growth before Crawford Building even hits the plate. So, the county commission very, very soon needs to really digest what's going to happen because any more staff added, be it a magistrate, family judge, or circuit judge, you are not prepared at home. And that's their biggest struggle over there. We met with the court administrator and they were talking about their biggest, their biggest problem is courtroom space, right? So, they, they currently have four that they can do jury trials in. Then they have the three magistrate courtrooms and they have one they do bring jury in. They struggle hard for courtroom space. So, you have five circuit judges, you have, I think, four family court judges, six, seven magistrates. Whole lot of people trying to do courtroom over there.
No other county has that problem, do they?
I don't know, sir.
Yeah.
Take care of it.
Yeah.
So, all totaled this last few years and currently open, you're at about $34 million worth of construction. Right now, as we sit here, you've been managing those day in, day out by yourselves for.
And how much of that, Gary, was ARPA money?
All but 10 million.
All but 10 million. I, I want to say that because the public, they, well, you all spent 37 million dollars. Why aren't you doing this, 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 you know? It was ARPA money that allowed the commission to do those kind of things and.
And I say that only because you sold bonds for the judicial, or the DRC. But you also got a $650,000 grant, so maybe a little less than, a little more than 10 million. But most, the majority of it was ARPA money.
Yes.
Right now, the, the budget for the Crawford Building is 20 million. So, that's 15 million on the structure and another 5 million to renovate the judicial center, to turn the magistrate courtrooms and the magistrate, and the magistrate offices into circuit judge offices and circuit courtrooms. Huge, huge undertaking. And you're faced with it. We've discussed before, probably realistically in 2029, you could be in construction with occupancy somewhere in 2030, 2031. That's it. I just wanted you to know, I know, I mean, you, you sit here and sign the purchase orders and we talk about change orders and do all of that stuff, but in the last couple of years, you spent about $34 million in construction progress.
But they've all been necessary and wonderfully done.
Everyone worked really hard.
Well, and the other thing that you pointed out that people need to understand too, this investment with the ARPA money is now going to allow us to operate at a much lower level of funding because of the efficiency that's being created in all these buildings.
Well, and.
And so, in a sense, it's going to save us money.
Accessibility to the public, you know, I mean, because not only did it get all our offices that the public attends, most of them downstairs, but it gave us the extension service out of here to.
Yep.
To Baltimore Street, Region 9 moved to the airport. You know, there's other advantages, accessibility and availability to the public.
I've had a lot of favorable comments about everything on the first floor.
Yeah. Well, I still.
I think they appreciate.
I directed some poor lady, she was standing there on the second floor, totally lost. And I said, can I help you? I need the assessor. I said, see there, downstairs. But, thank you.
It's been good.
Lease agreement with the senior services.
So, you have had a lease agreement that has expired and it, that was with the senior center for a building that you own and you pay all expenses for up there that has expired. I think through their audit process, their auditor stumbled across and said, hey, you need to get that renewed. Your legal team reviewed it and you've got a proposed updated agreement with you. The, the old square footage rate was like $14, even though they weren't paying anything. So, you have tenants in a building that you, your facilities teams take care of. You put a new roof on, you put new siding on, anything and everything that happens there, even if their cooking equipment has issues, Jack and his team go up services.
And the building looks great. Every time I drive by there, I just look at it and say, man, this is a nice looking building.
Right.
So, as the representative from the commission on that particular board, believe me, they, they, every meeting they expressed appreciation of what the county does for the seniors. We have the nicest facility in the state. Probably have the best director in the state. She was just awarded that honor. And I think we're probably touching more senior lives than anybody else in the state.
I think they, I think they could do better with that, but it's not, I don't think it's particularly their fault.
And obviously, as the population grows and we live longer, there's going to be more need. But, but believe me, they, they, they do appreciate it very much. And I was teasing her that you said that, you know, we're just going to sell, give them the building so they, they about passed out.
Yeah. I've, I've mentioned that on several occasions. Never really got a, a good response.
It's the right thing to do. We need to take care of us, help our senior population.
One thing I would, I've always wanted the senior center to do is expand their cooperation with other senior organizations. Meals on Wheels, the state, you know, with their senior programs and everything to try to to get them, you know, to cooperate better. And haven't been really successful, but maybe you could carry that.
Well, but Amy does attend the statewide senior service meetings and that, and so they're involved and they get share. And I, I personally think you're doing a great job over there.
Oh, I'm sure they are.
They're working with Meals on Wheels, hopefully. I've been told that, I don't know if it's. But it, it's a great facility and, you know, recently I said they, they hosted the Rotary there for their luncheon. And it was the first time they ever did that. And now they want to come back, okay? But they were unbelievable. And, you know, most of Rotarians are seniors. But they couldn't believe how nice the facility was. They couldn't believe how good the meal was. And Amy pointed out, well, we serve you the same meal we served our seniors today. So, they were blown away.
Well, I've seen your menu and the menu looks pretty good.
Yeah, it's very good.
So, you, you have not received any lease money from man for the probably 18 years I've been around here. The way the lease is written, I mean, if it's the, if it's the desire of the commission to a dollar a year kind of thing, you know, right now it's $14.99 a square. You're not collecting anything from them. I think whatever you decide to do, if you want to continue to inkind it to them, I think we need to have the lease.
Has this, has the senior services board seen this?
Yeah, no. It's just a cleaned up version of what they had before.
Yeah.
There's no change. Other than Jeff saying, hey, you might want to get a little more money. I was going to get anything out of him anyway, but stand by.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's whatever the commission wants to do.
Well, making it an official contract and document, I think maybe a dollar.
Well, that's what's, yeah, that's what's, that's what this says.
And actually, and actually, I mean, we, we consider budgeting other monies in addition to that. And last year, we, as we did with a lot of outside agencies, we cut those budgets. So, you can adjust it there to me, but keep the building thing at a dollar is, to me, the right way to go, in my opinion.
Well, I need a motion.
So, I move.
To take it as, as, as it goes and present it to the senior services center?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approved the lease agreement and then go show it to the senior services center. Do I have a second? You, you seconded it, right, Steve?
Yes.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those approve? That's approved?
Amy's watching, she'll be glad to see she's not paying now.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas, Amy.
There's a proclamation I won't get into. I guess we can just remove that from the agenda.
No, I don't think so. I think I've got it right here that if you allow me to read it.
Well, I'm not going to read it.
Do you want to stand for this one? Come on.
Stand?
Yeah, I'm going to make you stand up.
Man, this is getting.
Getting technical for you?
You know, you're going to have to have a, give a speech afterwards, too.
I was prepared for that.
This, this proclamation is for James R. Barnhart. Whereas James R. Jim Barnhart began working as a sanitarium with the Berkeley County Board of Health on November 6, 1972.
That was 10 years old.
Oh, that's, just keep it up.
Keep it up, all right. After graduating from West Virginia University with a bachelor's degree in biology and geology, and whereas Jim retired on February the 24th, 2012.
Know what I was in?
I won't go down there. As a registered sanitarium for Berkeley County Health Department, after more than 39 years of service for the betterment of public health, a career that included serving as the agency's public health administrator and whereas Jim was elected on November the 6th, 2012 to the Berkeley County Council and was re-elected to serve a second term, second six-year term of the governing body of Berkeley County in 2018. And whereas councilperson now Commissioner Barnhart served on various boards and commissions of the, of the county during his tenure, including Berkeley County Board of Health, Berkeley County Public Service Water District, Eastern Panhandle Regional Planning and Development Council, Region 9, West Virginia University Extension Service, Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle Metropolitan Planning Organization Interstate Council, Berkeley County Solid Waste Authority, Telemont Corporation, Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia, and whereas Commissioner Barnhart was appointed in 2016 by Governor Earl Ray Tomlin to serve on the Chesapeake Bay Local Government and Advisory Committee, serving as a lone representative for West Virginia on the panel, on the panel for more than eight years. And whereas Jim, Jim's more than 50 years of combined service to Berkeley County, West Virginia, and its citizens is worthy of recognition and commendation. And now, therefore be it resolved, that the, that the Berkeley County Commission recognizes James R. Jim Barnhart as a distinguished citizen of Berkeley County for his longstanding public service and wishes him all the best in his, all the best in his retirement, adopted this 26th day of December, 2024.
Thank you.
My distinct pleasure to shake your hand.
Thank you.
We're going to sit down and you're going to speak.
Oh, okay. Well, I want to congratulate whoever wrote that darn thing. They actually got all the facts right.
Penny.
You got it absolutely correct. I'm impressed. Well, thank you all. You know, 52, 52 years in county service is quite a long time. And it's amazing how quick it went, particularly the last 12 years. Doug Coburn Avery, when he retired, he commented on the fact that his 12 years went like a blink of an eye. And he was absolutely correct. So, you've got a lot to look forward to in the blink of an eye, let me tell you. And I really have enjoyed every minute of it. The agencies that I served, I've tried to serve them well. And we'll wait for Matt to answer soon. And I really enjoyed every minute of my service. And I appreciated everyone who I worked with, all of you who are here, all of you who aren't here, all of you who are watching on, on TV. It's, it's been a real joy. And I really want to thank you all for your assistance and, and support. I really appreciate it. All right, how you doing? And that's my speech.
Well-prepared.
Yeah, Alpha Cup.
Alpha Cup.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I'm sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Barnhart, I've known you from your previous employment and.
Many years.
Many, many years.
Back in the old, when you sold real estate.
That's correct. But your, your professionalism and your expertise, especially as a sanitarium in the county, would grow a tremendous amount of respect from people that I've worked with, you know, putting in septic systems and building homes and stuff like that. You were very well respected.
Well, when I came to the health department in 1972, the first thing I was taught was you help the public. You know, this is not.
Who taught you that?
Bill Dean. And, you know, that was the number one thing I was always told to do, help the individual.
Well, you did well. You, you listened well and you served the public well. And then later on, you know, as I transitioned into the county, you know, occasionally I would say, hey, Jim, I need to talk to you for a minute. I need your help on this, need your support on this. You're always willing to help, you know, try and move the issues with emergency services forward. Appreciate your help there. So, when I come here as a colleague, I, I think the thing that I appreciated the most with you was your, your steadfast discussion and, and your thought process. Whereas I want if something happened like that, perhaps with a knee jerk, you were much more subtle and more well-thought-out, and I appreciate that. With those conversations that we had, to look at it from a different point of view, perhaps. But it's been a true pleasure and I appreciate you. And, you know, we'll, we'll miss you, that's for sure.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I've only been on the commission for two years. We're going to miss the treats that Lynda sends in every Thursday. Not, not quite as much as we're going to miss you, but almost as much so.
Yeah, gildewill. Yeah, gildewill.
But Jim and I go back, of course, in Parks and Rec days, when the Health Department was a big player in that. They inspected our food services and our pools.
I inspected yours.
You did, you did it all. And let me tell you, there were times over the years that they weren't so, I want to say controversial people that worked there that would give you a hard time, but Mr. Barnhart never did. And he was there for the right reasons, knowing that we're doing a public service too. And instead of cracking the whip on us, he tried to help us and improve things. And I appreciate that greatly.
I know where you all came from.
You did. Before that, when he first moved to Berkeley County, his family, and his dad worked down at DuPont. And our families went to the Hedgesville United Methodist Church for many years together.
Steve was...
Yeah. Well, he was your sister Sandy's age. We graduated together and whole Barnhart crew. And so we had a lot of connection back then. And but I appreciated you very much when you were there at the Health Department, Jim. And I appreciate you the last two years as I've been indoctrinated now into this role, so thank you.
Thank you. You've been a good friend for...
Fifty?
No, sixty. Sixty years.
Was he taller than you back then, Steve?
He was.
Yeah. Yeah, I stopped and he didn't.
Well, I can say that when I first met Jim was probably... No kidding aside, it was when I was in my younger years and my dad do excavating and put in septic systems. And I can tell you, whenever Jim showed up, if... It wasn't criticism if you didn't do it right. He just explained to you how to do it better. And I've always thought that, you know, being an educator and teaching somebody how to do something better, Jim, you were the epitome of making that happen. So I hope that I learned from it, that over the years that you inspected the systems that I've put in, that I improved on them over those years. Knock on wood, most of them are still working, so I guess I've done part of it right.
That's a success rate right there.
And but, you know, the last twelve years here on this commission, council now commission, it has always been a pleasure. And I'm not sure who's going to be able to adjourn these meetings from now on or recess them, but you may have to come back in every once in a while and help us get out of here, so. But with that, I want to say thank you. And to Linda, we got to enjoy quite a vacation one time back in February of twenty-fourteen, and I'll never forget that. To spend time with good friends and good people.
That was exceptional.
That was an exceptional trip.
Yeah. Especially the two weeks that we were missed here and...
I don't think we were missed. I mean, I'll tell you what, it was... Anybody who want to know about a trip to take, it was a fun... It's probably one of the best vacations I've ever been on and the company spent. Thank you.
Well, it took one notch off your bucket list.
It did. It took a big notch, probably one of the biggest notches I've ever had on the bucket list.
Well, I thought of that when I asked you if you wanted to go.
Yeah.
Because I knew it was on your bucket list.
It was.
Thank you, Jim. I thank all of you. I mean, it's funny that I've known all of you long before the commission date. I have a history with all three of you before the commission date. And that has really helped our relationship considerably because we were friends before any of us even thought about this situation. And I appreciate it, and, you know, I'll always remember you as friends, not as fellow commissioners. I appreciate that. Now, Gary?
He's really nice.
But Gary has turned out to be a good friend. He's been over to my house, we've had a few drinks together and...
And Linda make great food.
Yeah. And, you know, he's invited, as long as he brings something with him. Invite him back. And his lovely wife.
Now, can I take the minute here now to open up the Florida? Anybody else who would like to say anything? Oh, come on now.
Good.
Come on, Penny.
Come on, Penny. Tracy. Matt. We'll save Linda for last.
Matt and Tracy have more free time on Thursdays now that he's not around here wearing them out.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you for the sixteen years I've been here. Out of those twelve, I have worked with you. You have always been very respectful to all of the staff. We've always felt valued and appreciated by you. A lot to us. We'll miss you.
Well, thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciated the work that you did, particularly with the Local Government Advisory Committee. Penny always acted as my catch person to separate me from the people at LGAC. So when they wanted something, they'd have to go through Penny, and that was very comforting. I appreciate it.
I don't feel keeping such a man to me.
Yeah, and bring truth. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Well, start at the beginning.
Twelve years ago, ten years.
For me. Jim is... Every Thursday, I look forward to him coming to the office and showing me what he picked up with. But I'm so thankful for your friendship. He cares. I don't care. And I thank you very honestly. I miss you, I'm going to miss your trees.
I always tried to give my support to the staff. I think they appreciated it. I don't know, they said they appreciated it, who knows? Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
I met Mr. Barnhart back there.
I can't believe that these people know all these dates, so, you know.
You're unforgettable.
Yeah, definitely.
He's since been in my office on multiple occasions, dealing with anything from Health Department regulations to property maintenance, to buildings, to planning, engineering, you name it. And one thing that was good is even if he had an issue with something, the way he brought it across was very professional. He did not come in and demand anything other than information on how to solve a problem. And I thought that was very professional, and I thought we've always had a good relationship. And congratulations.
Comes from thirty-nine years at the Health Department.
Well, Jim, I don't know exactly when I met you. It wasn't that memorable. I remember when I first met Linda.
She's much better looking.
The few years I've been here, I've always enjoyed your funny whips. I mean... This is my advice more than other commissions. Thank you, vice.
Present company excluded.
Thank you for your decades of service to the county and your luck.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I've been working since I was sixteen years old or going to school. This will be an adventure.
Barnhart, I met you in August of twenty-twenty. I'm sorry, I did it, so I'm probably one of the... I appreciate it. I was for this.
It was a joy to meet you, and you've done wonders with emergency communication. You added on to what Mary Cackley did, and it's been an adventure. Thank you.
I appreciate your plummy questions coming out here in the morning. Tell me that I did a... I know I should have come up here.
Well, there were, yeah, they're all going.
And I probably should have known about that ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah, they're all going now.
They are. Congratulations.
Thank you. Uh-oh.
Fisher?
Yeah.
What date did you meet him?
I met Jim in the spring of twenty-twelve. Oh, anything about interview or anything about what he said.
You asked me some dumb questions.
Yeah, some dumb questions. I know I definitely did, because that's our job, ask dumb questions.
And he did give you some dumb answers.
Oh, yeah. Off the top of my head.
And then he ran again, went back again. But in between, I will say this. For my benefit, Jim would ask dumb questions up here in front of us. Help me understand what was going on. And I... Because I didn't know, you know, I was a...
Well, my questions were actually what the public would ask.
Right, right. Questions that I would have asked.
Yeah.
He was always very helpful in illuminating things that I was like, so what? And then Jim would ask a question, I'm like, ah, I got it, I got it. So it was very helpful, and he didn't, I don't know if he really realized he was doing that for me, but...
No, I did.
But he was very helpful, and I appreciate that. In honor of Jim's last day, I'm wearing his Christmas socks today that he gave me a couple of Christmas. So thanks, Jim, for so supportive of me. We're here now with...
Well, when you came here and actually got an office, I would come visit you every Thursday morning.
Yes.
And we'd talk about politics or...
We didn't talk about anything, Jack. For the record.
Yeah, it was all secret.
No, anyway.
But they were always good conversations.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. And I've got also, like everyone else, missed the treats of your other half. No business, and before you made it on, you should have done a little business and you could make it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnhart, sir, we're a little short-staffed down at fiduciary, so I had to pop out earlier, but I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate you on a well-earned retirement. I started here a little over four years ago, and...
And you were, looked like a deer in a headlights.
I had four days of training. I have obviously had the law school stuff, so I know the rules, but it was a trial by fire.
Yes, it was.
And we got through it. But, you know, in every state hearing, and hearing off of what Matt's saying, I always count on Barnhart to ask intelligent questions, not obviously just for me, but for the audience's benefit as well. I always count on that. And it helped me of kind of getting out of the jargon of, I understand that not everybody's up on the whole probate thing. So it certainly was helpful, so congratulations, sir, and you're well-earned.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So for me, I think it was January the second, two thousand and twelve. We're a little more gray, not so much white, but that's all right. So you got your ID printed, and, you know, it was cool hanging out with you for the first seventeen years, the first, what, eleven years of the relationship. This last one, so I worked really hard to be ready to get up here, right? And I'm like, all right, Steve's going to ask me this, and Eddie will ask me that, and Mr. Whittaker asked me this, and HD asked... I never know what you're going to ask me. So when it's my turn to deliver something, hand to goodness, sir. What's the Barnhart question today? What's the Barnhart question today?
Well, I would, I ask what I thought the public should, would want to know.
But my most favorite question was, Aliyah, you'll appreciate this. We're getting ready to hire Aliyah as an executive admin. And he said, what are you going to do with her? I don't know, maybe she dances for that. I don't know what she does.
I didn't know what she was going to do.
But it has truly been a pleasure, sir. And after those many years, you deserve it. You have a wonderful person to spend the rest of your life with, so if you need any more chickens...
Who's that?
Sorry, Linda.
Oh, right.
Enjoy yourself.
Are we suggesting here today that in future meetings, you're going to be here when it goes item from the public?
It's a distinct possibility.
Get in line.
I was going to say, remember, we've got a three-minute limit.
I appreciate all of you and all of your comments, you know, and nice comments. You know, I'm not sure of them, but, you know, I'll take from what they're handed out to be. And I really appreciated being here and working here. I remember being here, not here, but in the old courthouse, going before the commission, Bob Burkhart and John Wright and Ed Williams, sitting there above you like the last tribunal. And it's like, you know, Bob Burkhart said, well, what do you want? Well, you know, I've got some people who are having several problems. If we help them, we got to help everybody. Well, yeah, that's kind of the idea, and...
Been there, done that.
Yeah. Those were the days. It's not quite like that now, but it was like that then. It was something. Back to from seventy-three on. Everyone I've worked with, the Health Department, the County Commission, has added to my experience, and it's been appreciated. Thank you. Anybody else?
You don't have to pass that gavel back. Oh, his plaque. It's backwards.
I don't know.
Thank you, Retses. May you be proud of the work you have done, the person you are, and the difference you have made. Happy retirement, James R. Barnhart, December twenty-twenty-four.
Might as well hear the old Bob Dylan song. May God bless, may God's blessing keep you always. May your wishes all come true. May you always do for others and others do for you. May you build a ladder to the stars and climb on every rung, and may you stay forever young.
A new movie out about Bob Dylan.
Yeah, well, I'm going to see it, but that's old Bob Dylan song. Thank you.
Do you know what the Tennessee Squires? I guess, what they lay their hat on? May you always ride an easy-walking horse, sleep beneath the rain-tight roof, be high on the hog and drink Jack Daniels every day of the year.
All right. Well, let's go. Do you have an executive session?
We do.
Oh, really?
For personnel and legal matters.
You heard the man. Do I have a motion to go in executive session?
Motion to go in executive session for personnel and legal matters.
Do you want a second? Moved and seconded, go in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session. Thank you all. Do you have any more items from the public? Thank you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, hey, let's take a picture real quick. Don't go away, some of y'all, please. Hey, Linda, Penny, hold on. We're going to get a picture first.
We're gonna get a picture first.